Essentially acting as the town's agent, putting it out to bed. And then you have your own clerk of the works, OPM to make, to watch over the town's interest. So there's, there's a lot of different ways we can proceed. Mr. Vadeney, I don't know if you want to talk about future, future meeting or a tour?
Yeah, that's, I was waiting for you to finish, but one of the things that we did talk about was, we would like to go through that building with the council. Like you guys to walk through that building with us because I'm not sure how many of you have actually really been through that building to see all of the conditions. Early on in this process, we walked through that building one night, the bill, the, you know, the task force, we walked through that building and Mr. Zosowski joined us. And I don't think he had really been through that building in a while and he, and I think he would, you know, I don't want to put words in my mouth. He was a little surprised, a little shocked to see some of the conditions that were present in that, in that basement room that, you know, the rooms that they're using down there. And I think it would be really eye opening for the council to go through there and see it with us and see what the conditions that we're talking about, what they actually are. And the, the other thing that we talked about was is we're giving you like this list for discussion because we want, we want input from the council to know which direction do you want us to go in? So we're not, we're not going down one path. And then when we present it, we get, well, we, we really want to look at this. So we gave you these options in different scenarios to get input from the council saying, this is the direction that we'd like you to look at. This is where we'd like you to go or to start to pursue and come back with a, with a, you know, with estimates in, in a, in a plan of attack, so to speak. But we're looking for input from you to know, tell us which direction you want us to go in.
And it doesn't have to be now. I mean, the, the will be after, after we try to arrange the tour of the facilities and that we can have some type of workshop or meeting. I don't know how that works on Zoom, but maybe things will free up a little bit by that time.
Mr. Zosowski, you got anything to add?
Oh, boy.
All right, I'll give you two minutes, Gary.
No. My immediate thought, Mr. President, is having a public meeting that goes through the police station, which is an active station, I have to defer to the solicitor on the ability to do that and have the public present. The get into these things, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that the more people see what the conditions are, and especially those that might have had opportunity to be able to compare them to frankly, any other police station in, in the area, by a town, you know, that, that is anywhere near similar. I, I, I think having a visit like that could be meaningful, but I also am trying to figure out how you do that. I mean, it'd have to be, it's very well because of what it is. And, you know, if we had detainees present, that schedule could get upset. I, I would have to cover that with the chief. And, you know, by law, you know, or more importantly, I guess, the global circumstance, I made it clear, I think, certainly to the, the task force, the members of the task force, and I think many members of the council. You know, I close every one of my email with a comment that says, you know, you don't get to great by doing good enough. And, you know, any additional investment in this building is at best good enough measure. I am absolutely convinced that what we're looking at here is potentially making another Halliwell-like decision. And the Halliwell-like decision that I mean is that decision that was made back in the 1950s, when the community didn't go forward with a traditional construction model and instead went forward with the building model that we all know so well today. And we're looking at knocking that building down. Ten years later, not that much farther down the road, we did make a, a, as a community, maybe not those of us sitting here, but we did make a decision to build a high school. And we invested in a high school building that was proper and appropriate to the, the need. And the way that things are shaping up with some additional investment, not the kind of investment that we're seeing in other communities with well over a hundred, in some cases $200 million to build new, new schools. We're looking at relatively minor investment on the scale of things to be able to make that building work for us perhaps, for perhaps another 50 years. I don't want to make anymore or be part of making another Halliwell-type discussion. I want to make discussions that get us to be the great community, continue to be the great community that we can be in all of these decisions, one at a time. So I encourage, Mr. President, the idea of a, a tour. I think we'll have to be careful about how we arrange that because of what the building is and, you know, wholeheartedly support the effort.
David Igliozzi has his hand raised.
Where's David? I don't see him, but David?
Mr. President, I would just suggest if you, if you're going to have a tour, that it be, first and foremost, I would suggest that it be documented with, under the control of the police to make sure no security information is being transferred, you know, with video. But it would be council members visited with less than a majority. I don't think a public tour is going to be possible, but you could bring information from your tour and present it at a council meeting on a video, provided it's under the, you know, under the supervision of the police department when you take that video. As to point out, because I would think you're going to go to a certain location and point out a problem and say, this is a problem that's X amount of money. I assume that that's the purpose of the tour, but I don't know. I think that would be the way you could get the tour individually as council members or less than a majority, and then bring it to the public because ultimately it's going to be a public discussion for potential public support.
Yep.
That's my suggestion, but you definitely would have to have the chief weigh in on how to preserve security of the police department.
I don't know, I don't know if, if Mr. Zolinski, Mrs. O'Hara, Mr. Ogier, I don't know if you've ever been in the basement of the police department. I know Mrs. Barneoli and I went through it. When Chief Reynolds was there and he was looking, we were on the budget committee and he was looking for, to fund some, some improvements in that building. So I know that her and I are familiar with, with the basement and I'm a little more familiar with it now going through with the task force that we've looked at it a lot, a whole lot better than we did back then, just looking at what we needed to fix it up to make it more usable. But I think David, to, to be fair, they really need to walk through the building and physically see it themselves. A video, I don't think will do it the service that it needs to have done. They need to walk through the building and see it, physically see it and, and look at it.
Mr. Vadeney, I think I, I taught in that building in, in the basement in about 1976.
Well, it's much different now, though.
I, I can imagine to accommodate what it needs. And if it was done when the school was closed, I can imagine.
I mean, just one of the examples, they have a men's locker room. When they, when they refurbished the building back in 1978, I believe.
Yeah.
Eighty-four.
1984.
I believe so.
Women on the force. We have multiple women now on the force. They don't really have a locker room per se for themselves. It's like, it's literally like a closet. They're holding cells, they're BCI, you really, we really have to go and view it. I, I really can't stress that enough that it, it has to be a physical visit. Walking through with it with a camera isn't going to, you might get some idea, but you really need to be physically in the building to really understand what they're facing. Mr. Zolinski?
Mr. President, it's been a few years since I, probably last time I was down in the basement was four years ago. But as the director of planning, my office was in that building. I was in the basement many, many times back then. There were movements to create a Sally Port, I don't know how many years ago that was. I've been in there, but I have to tell you, it's been more than four years. I'll say this right now, it was deplorable then and it's probably worse now. So it's not, can it contain detainees? Sure. But is it the right place to be keeping them? No, it, it, it needs to be looked at and reworked without a doubt.
Mr. Ogier?
I'll make it quick. Yeah, no, I'm fully okay with going, taking a tour of it. I know, I think it would be important to see it, you know, in the current state. I just do have one quick question. I'm, you know, I'm open to the idea of, you know, if we decide to go forward with building a new police station or, you know, a new public safety complex or whatever we end up doing. However, though, I do have a question about what would be done or what would be left behind with the old building. Did, I don't know if the MBITF thought of anything that could be done with it or if any of it was salvageable? If option one was the way that the council decides to go?
Yeah, we haven't really thought that far ahead. We're, we're dealing primarily with what's there and how effective it would be, how much money to put into it to, to keep it running until something new is built? Or how much to put into it and where, based on the limited budget that we have? How to spend the money wisely? So we haven't really thought about ultimately what's going to happen to the building. It's, again, my opinion, my opinion, not necessarily the task force, is might not have much use. Depending on where the, the police station would go, if the police station would go and back, so you'd be able to maintain existing situation until a new building is built. There you're talking about demolishing the building entirely. But if you're talking about a different area to build a public safety complex, that's, we haven't had, had those discussions.
One, one of the things that, that we, that we looked at and we talked about though was there were certain things that we need to do, even if, even if the plan was, and, and I'm not saying it's tomorrow, it, this could be five, six years down the road, 10 years down the road, we don't know what it's going to be. But if the decision is that we're going to replace that police station, our thinking to all of this is it still needs to have asbestos remediation done, regardless of whether, whether the men stay in that building or whether we're looking to knock it down. It still needs to have the asbestos piece of it done to it. That's, it's, it's at the top of our list. There are other things that we, that we look at and say, okay, how long are they going to be there? And, and so what upgrades and what do we need to do to buy time? And then that, that third option is if, if it's not going to happen, then we need to know that how are we going to put this thing so that they're in a decent place that's safe and clean and healthy and all of those issues? And so that, that's what we're dealing with. And so that's why we want more input from the council. I did see you had your hand up, Mr. Zosowski, and then I got you, Mr. Zolinski, after.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make clear, you know, from what I have understood in discussions with the task force along the way, the, the roundhouse number that we're looking at for a replacement police station is about $6 million. The numbers that you've totaled here or have presented here get pretty close to $1 million. And that's without the list of issues that were talked about by the police themselves. Twenty, you know, that kind of, of, it, it, it would be painful to me to think that we would go ahead and spend that million dollars to get us a few mil, few years down the road, whether that's two years, five years, or in my mind, I'm very skeptical about anything that thinks as long as 10 years. I don't think we can do it. I don't think we can operate within that building as a, a location for the professional services that our police want to deliver. So, you know, I think the, we're looking at perhaps, you know, and in my mind, wasting a million dollars. Yes, we have to deal with the asbestos one way or the other. The location, the last thing I'll say is that the location has been again and again emphasized as great for the hub of our police operations. There is no question that the, the police are able to get where they need to go in town well from that location and the concentration of calls is closest to that location. So, you know, the, the location is good. The idea is when do we build a station behind it and knock down the old building, in my mind?
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes, the location is really good, but there is, everyone needs to be aware that there is a sewer easement that runs through the back of that property. Basically where a little playground trike park is. So pretty much the town condemned that when they approved that sewer easement for one individual who would not allow anybody else on their street to tie in. So there's an easement back there. I don't know how, that, that's more of a legal question, but it is a great location if we can get around that sewer reason.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
That, the easement is there, Councilman Zolinski, but from engineering standpoint, it's inconsequential.
Okay, from a build over it or parking lot over it, sure, it may pose a problem, but we'd have to see the plans to see the exact location.
Yeah, we're, we're quite a ways away from there. I, I got to agree with Gary. I've said it been once, I've said it in the last four months, five months or whatever, that yeah, we need to build a new police station. The town needs to realize that we need to build a new police station. The question is, when are we going to do it? That's, that's the question that's out there. And what we need to determine is what are we going to do before we do that? That's where the task force is right now. That's our update coming to you is what are we going to do before we get there? And how long have we got before we get there? It's not, it's, anyone that's going to go through that building, I mean, I kind of joked when we went through it one, one night with one of the officers that took us through it and, and one of the captains went through it. And I said, you know, if you really need a new police station, you need to rest everybody in town and bring them through here. It won't take long. They, you really need to see the, the basement of that building. You really do. Anyone else? If I can, I'm going to leave it to you and David to work out the logistics with the chief and the legality of how we can accomplish this so that we can, we can get together with the task force and the council to go through this.
Did you say me, Mr. President? I don't, I didn't understand who you were asking that to.
Oh, I'm asking, I, I'm going to kind of put it to you and to David.
Very good.
The logistics and the legality of trying to get this meeting set up so that we can get it accomplished.
Absolutely.
You can talk with the chief and, and, and with David, hopefully we can figure out how we can legally go about doing this. And obviously you know, the sooner the better.
Absolutely, no problem here. I completely agree.
Any other questions, comments from the council to Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you.
Thank you for the continuing work.
And we're, we're close. We're getting real close to wrapping up the, the new town hall part of this thing. We're trying to, you know, wrap this thing up, put a little bow and be done with it. We're getting closer every, every time we meet, but we're still quite not there yet. We got a few little things that we've got to rectify before we can close it out. But for the most part, it's done, it's complete. It's an issue of paperwork and getting, getting other things, getting to agreement with the contractor. Few outstanding issues that we got to get agreement on. But it's, we're getting closer. Obviously the building is operating, you guys have been in it. And so it's a matter of it's, sometimes this is the toughest part of a project is closing it out. All the paperwork that you have to go through and the time constraint that you fit, that you fit with it. Getting the work, getting the physical work done isn't, isn't the hottest part of the job. Anything else, Mr. Nordstrom?
No, that covers it.
Okay. Thank you. We will, we'll be in touch to figure out a date then. Thank you. Next item, discussion by council voter, other action on properly located at flat one, lot 91 and 92 owned by the Munjen Family Trust. I put that on there not knowing if the municipal court was back in session. And I've been told that they are back in session right now. Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, sir. They have re-initiated meeting.
I, I put this on there because at the time when we first discussed this, there was no, municipal court wasn't in session. This is just one of the, we got a few issues like that in town. They continue to escalate because the municipal court isn't there to address it. And so it, it seems like it's getting worse and worse. So I, I put this on there with those two, with the two attachments in there of state law, 45-24-60, item B, under administration violation, it has to do with zoning ordinances. And then 45-24-62, administration judicial aid and enforcement, item number two. I put those on there to discuss with David as tools that are available to us. Should we, should we run into these issues with zoning that have other avenues that we can pursue other than the municipal court? Solicitor, that we can actually go to, to Superior Court to pursue this stuff if we need to, instead of just the municipal court, if we're having, if we're having too many issues with municipal court. I put it on there more as a, as a way to say, we have other tools in our tool belt that we can handle some of these issues if we need to. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that the municipal court is back. They're back in session, starting to hear things. So maybe these things will get resolved and we don't have to go down that route. But I just, I just included it so that we were all aware that there were other tools that we can use sometimes if we run into a roadblock to keep these things moving along and it takes it out of the municipal court and goes actually to Superior Court. How was that was my, my point of putting that there? You agree with that, David?
I, I do, Mr. President. But obviously you want to make that to be your last resort because obviously that's a very expensive process. That's outside of Kerry filing a complaint at the zoning, at the municipal court. That's an affirmative petition at the, obviously Superior Court, and it becomes expensive. You know, if you're going to get into a lot of those, you're going to have to stop budgeting for them. You know, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. They're not, they're not inexpensive to prosecute. But yes, those are at your disposal, Mr. President.
They're just other tools that are available to us. I just wanted to, I'm just glad the municipal court is back, back in session. Any other, Mr. Zolinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's to Solicitor Igliozzi. David, the, I have a staple hot copy. It says North Smithfield Municipal Court. And it says, the following court dates have been set on the above named case. Now normally what the name case usually falls right under the North Smithfield seal. On this particular one, the case is not named. So I just wanted to make sure that the name of the case is listed. And this particular case, I'm going to assume the paperwork I have, which, which says it's going to be August 19th at 6:00 a.m. on the next court date, than it is for North Smithfield Municipal Court versus Michael Munjen R. So I don't know how close actually you guys, if you can see it, maybe you can't. But there's no, there's no name of the case. That's all, mine, just.
I, I understand, I, I will confirm that with Kerry. Obviously that notice comes out of the municipal court and we'll make sure that that's accurate.
And it doesn't, doesn't state the name of the case or it has a date and so.
Yeah, it has a date, but no name of the case.
Correct.
We'll make sure we confirm that.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yeah?
If I might, I, I think, you know, we've got a couple of cases that have shown that it, it may be necessary that we need to look at our zoning ordinance to be able to beef up the enforcement element. I mean, I can't believe I'm saying that. But on the other hand, this has just been a great example of how our ability to get to the issue has just been sidestepped again and again and again. And it, we need, as the solicitors indicated, there is an option to go to Superior Court, but I, I would like to see us have more strength in our, our local zoning control. I don't have recommendations for you, but I, I need to be getting something in that vein together. The zoning official and the solicitor.
Understood. Now it makes sense if we can, if we can tighten up our regulations, that makes it easier for enforcement, win-win. Next up, new business, discussion by council voter, other action on school bonds. Item one, SCV DPM invoice number 90017315 dated 6/10/2020 in the amount of $195. Their motion to approve.
Some of.
And this is Barneoli, second by Mrs. Zolinski and Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? During non-roll call vote?
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski? Yes. Sorry, Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Item two, Stephen Turner, Inc., invoice number 3183 dated 5/31/20 in the amount of $351.25. Their motion to approve.
To move.
By Mr. Zolinski, second by Mrs. Barneoli. Discussion during non-roll call vote?
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Item three, Stephen Turner, Inc., invoice number 3036 dated 1/31/20 in the amount of $107.50. Motion to approve?
To move.
Motion by Mrs. Zolinski, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Barneoli. Under discussion, it's one of these, again, look at the date on it, 1/31/20. It's not a lot of money, but it's, we're trying to close up these projects. And I know it's driving Mr. Hayes a little bit crazy over there, but we've made, we've made the school department aware of it and that maybe they're catching up with it and getting it done, but we need to address that a little bit. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadeney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter, action on resolution for the installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Sunny Crest and Carlton Avenue. Mr. Zolinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. A brief history on this. This started, an email chain started back on May 7th. I was contacted by Mr. George, who lives at 12, excuse me, 6 Sunny Crest. And he was expressing for his neighbors as well as his family concern for the safety of children as well as pedestrians and vehicle traffic on Sunny, at the intersection of Carlton and Sunny Crest. So there's a very lengthy email chain here, but I'll just try to highlight some of them. I said to Mr. George, who have you contacted? And he had lent me departments of people that he had contacted. And he asked me if there was something I could do. I said, I, I may not be the person, but I'll come out, take a look at it. Contacted the administrator. The administrator asked the police department to come out and do a traffic count in May. Also, it came back recommendation from the police department that they needed some stop, speed limit signs out there, 25 miles per hour, which were promptly in place, put in place. But the report from the police stated that there had been no incidents and they had three posts, meaning I, I'm assuming that they had three offices out there counting traffic. This was on May 7th. So I expressed that to, and the recommendation came back that they, there was no need for a stop sign. I expressed that to Mr. George and Mr. George very succinctly said, so what do we do? Do we wait till somebody gets hit over there? Then it was another email, basically to a child gets injured over there. Then it was another email from Mr. George claiming that there was another mayor incident out there. So I contacted the administrator and he again contacted the police department. You, you should have this in your packet. The first Lieutenant Bergeron on May 15th sent out a memo stating, talked about the 25 miles per hour and really not a need for a stop sign. I asked the administrator to look back into it again. And then on May 17th, from Lieutenant Bergeron to Chief Lafferty.
June 17th.
I'm sorry, June 17th, thank you, to Chief Lafferty, that it said that a stop sign would not pose any issues regarding traffic. So this is basically. So this is basically where we are. We're, I don't know, a couple of weeks away from August. Hopefully, the children will be back in school. But it's an ongoing problem whether they're in school or not. It's taken a long time. We need a budget. I understand all that. But this is a safety issue, and hopefully, if we get a director of public safety, the administrator tonight can say, install two signs, and hopefully, we'd not have to go any further with a resolution or anything else that's required for this. It's a matter of, I'm going to guess, seventy-five to a hundred dollars per sign. It would require two of them. That's a small price to pay for peace of mind for the residents. God forbid a child gets hit over there on his bicycle, because as we all know, I grew up and everybody grew up, we don't ride our bicycles in the driveway. It's a nice neighborhood. The line of sight is good. But I think I happen to agree with the residents out there, for public safety, we should have two stop signs installed over there. That's basically it, unless I need to come back and make further comment. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think that the request is.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. May I? One other thing. So I'm in possession of a petition that Mr. George started out there. And I kind of like to look at numbers. The house numbers on Sunny Crest run from number three to number twenty-six. It's not a big spread. They have a total of eighteen signatures. Some spouses or significant others have signed both at the same address. Out of the eighteen signatures, eight of those eighteen do not have children. So there is ten signatures there that are concerned about the safety of their children. Those ten houses represent twenty-two children. And speaking with Mr. George, he said, "I did not," said he did not extend going with the petition. So hopefully, we can have stop signs put up on Sunny Crest and Carlton Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
I know that we can do that, but there's a process to follow. Fortunately, and I'll ask the solicitor if he wants to weigh in, but you want to put up a traffic control device, it needs to go by an ordinance, not by a resolution.
Well, the town, Public Safety Director, Director to be put in.
It's by ordinance. If you want to put in traffic, if you want to put in a traffic control device, it needs to be done by ordinance. And you can go look through in our ordinances, and you're going to see it. It's number, it's under chapter fifteen, section fifteen point five. And item number twenty-eight addresses stop signs, and number thirty-one actually addresses a four-way stop sign, which is what we're looking to do. So the solicitor can tell me if I'm correct or not. It needs an ordinance in order for us to go forward and do that.
Certainly.
I'm not against it, Paul. I'm not against it, I'm saying.
But what I would like to ask, in reading the town charter, what is the role of the Public Safety Director? Do they have the authority to say, "Put a stop sign"?
Mr. President?
Mr. Izowski?
The, I am the Public Safety Director, as we know, and I am concerned about the safety of children as well as every other person in the town, and every motorist in the town. I also, as you all know, am a licensed registered professional engineer. I have training in traffic engineering. I have never practiced in that arena. So I say that first, make sure that I'm not expressing my opinion as a professional, as a registered professional, but simply communicating with you what I have found as I've looked at this. Traffic engineering isn't something that I am comfortable doing by petition. What I did when I got this request, as is obvious, went to the police station, went to the police chief, and we got the first report from the traffic officer that indicated, and I do believe that is his perspective, that there isn't any immediate justification for that, for a change. The other thing that I did, because I haven't practiced in traffic engineering, is I went to someone who does, with the State Traffic Commission. As you all know, we have leaned on them for issues related to roadways, and confirmed my perspective that traffic, a stop sign is a traffic management tool. It is not a traffic speed tool. Traffic speed signs were, you know, this circumstance made it clear and revealed that there were no speed limit signs on Sunny Crest Avenue. They have been put in place, and speed has been monitored. The issue here is that, you know, when you install signs like this, you work against driver intuition. We have had no issues at that intersection, or the one after it, that I suspect is far busier in the time that I've been in office. And the police report indicates that, indicates that, at least for the Sunny Crest and Carlton circumstance. There, from a professional standpoint, I have to look at this and say that the stop sign is not warranted, and that's why this Public Safety Officer has not recommended that it be put in place. The issue is before you. You are the final decision makers. I offer my opinion. I leave the decision to you. Thank you.
Mr. Zulinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, a stop sign is a traffic tool, and stopping controls speed, there's just no question about that. Stop a vehicle, they have to decelerate, then they have to accelerate back. I would like to ask the solicitor, David, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but are you familiar with the Director of Public Safety? Do they have the authority to install a stop sign?
I mean, I think the way the state law operates in conjunction with the charter and the ordinances is that, and in fact, in your town, I guess historically, has always been a combination of the police chief and the Public Works Department. Obviously, I assume with the blessing of the administrator as the Public Safety Director, installing a stop sign. However, the statute also says it can either be done by that authority or by the council. So if it's going to be done by the council, so a resolution would have been a request for the Public Safety Director and the Public Works Director to install the sign. But if the council wants to mandate it, then it would be in ordinance. So a resolution is a request for them to do it under the authority they have. If they don't want to do it, the council always has the final authority by ordinance to impose a sign, because they've done it in the past. Not which we got the stop signs, but we got other signs, if you look in that statute. I mean, in our ordinance, section five, fifteen dash five.
So, Mr. Leozy, you prepared a resolution to this effect?
But I was going to say, I think if the administrator's taking the position, which is certainly his right, that he doesn't think it's warranted, it would take a vote of the council to ask that an ordinance be drafted, and then it would take two votes. And I could draft an ordinance for the next meeting.
In a public hearing, correct?
In a public hearing on.
An ordinance?
Well, it's not mandatory on this ordinance, but if you want to have one, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
So we'll be in September. We will be in September before any vote is taken on this.
Well, I don't know. You got two meetings before September?
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have, if, so on my hearing that we can't just do a resolution, which you prepared, on my hearing, we can't just do this?
Not if the administrator is not, if the administrator's taking the position, he does not want to exercise his power as the Public Safety Director, then the only way the council can override that is by ordinance. So the administrator has the power to do it under state law in conjunction with, they did a traffic study, they can do that, because state law says it. But other than that, it then has to be by council ordinance. Originally, I thought it was a resolution, which is a request to get it done, do that method. There is no, if you look in your ordinances, there are no list of locations where stop signs are. If you go to the city of Cranston, there's an ordinance with a hundred and fifty streets where stop signs are listed. They do it individually. There's no list like that in North Smithfield. If you look in your ordinances, there's no list of stop signs. They were, according to the chief, they were always installed in conjunction with the chief, the public works, and the administrator in this capacity as the Director of Public Safety. They were not done by ordinance in the town before.
Number thirty-one was.
Thirty-one might have been, but that's one time, right?
That was a four-way, that was when they took a two-way stop and made it a four-way stop.
Right. It might have been a time when, again, the administrator didn't want to do it, or they just took the action on their own. But I agree, we can do it that way. Can definitely do it that way. And that's what I would suggest, since there's a disagreement between the administration and the legislative body, the legislative body lacked an ordinance.
So let me ask you this, trying to foresee further roadblocks to a stop sign? So if we have an ordinance, we have a public hearing, we have the second meeting, and fortunately, we have this ordinance accepted, does the town administrator have veto power after that?
He does. He has so many days to veto it, but then the council can override it.
All right. So if I may, Mr. President, I'm sure others may have some comments they wish to lend in, but I will be making a motion that we put an ordinance for the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Sunny Crest and Carlton Avenue on our very next council agenda, so we can get this rolling. But of course, there may be other dialogue coming.
Is that a motion?
Is there any other dialogue? I don't hear anybody.
Well, if we have a motion and get a second.
I'll make the motion. That's a motion, Mr. President.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Excuse me. From the floor, we're getting little notations saying there's something familiar as it is where they are. I don't know if you can get to speak to them, if they can come on board on this, but they seem to feel differently.
If I may follow up on that, the reason I asked during Good and Welfare if the town clerk could explain how people could raise their hand and come in, because I thought people that live on Sunny Crest and Carlton area or the neighborhood would wish to have spoken. So if Council O'Hara is making a motion to open this up to the people to raise their hand and be recognized, I certainly would support that.
Now, you see these little postings every now and then?
I think she's talking about the chat, Paul.
Chat.
I know what she's talking about.
Oh, no, Paul, I wasn't, sorry, not Mr. President, to the other Paul.
Lily.
I'd like it opened up, if they have a viewpoint on it, we should be listening to it.
Lily, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say that the, I know at least one of the commenters on the chat was not present during the Good and Welfare, so we didn't ignore anybody during the Good and Welfare.
Again, I don't think that these folks are neophytes when it comes to town council meetings as being, people understand how to be recognized. In person, they can stand up and approach the podium. On a Zoom meeting, there are some people that understand it, but I think the majority of folks didn't understand it. So if.
I make a motion that we allow these people to voice their opinion.
I would second that motion.
Any other discussion?
Just to talk about this point, right?
Yes, to talk about stop at all.
Yeah, and Madam Clegg, I understand, you know, how to do this. You know, you go to the participants, you choose more, and you raise your hand. But would you mind explaining that to the folks, just in case there's somebody out there that came a little late?
Sure. I will also note that there are directions on every agenda. If you have any questions on how to work Zoom, there's helpful videos posted just for this reason alone. And anybody can also contact me. I've actually helped many people in town figure out how to work the Zoom. But if you want to chat to say that you want to chat, just let me know. I'm paying attention to the chat. You can go to your name over the, roll over your name under Participants, under More, you can raise your hand. Or you can physically raise your hand on video, because I do monitor that throughout them as well. Jesse George just raised her hand, for example. So it does give me notifications when it does happen.
Yeah, so simplicity, folks can go to participants, and they can raise their hand so that they can be heard. Well, we had a motion, and we had a second. I'm sorry, Mr. Zoe.
Yeah, I just want to ask, I mean, how.
You don't need me.
Paul, is it okay, Mr. President, is it okay if I speak?
Go ahead.
I think, you know, the chat is obviously a new feature. You know, it's not always utilized. You know, I do attend and watch the planning board meetings from time to time, and I do see that it gets a lot of activity during it. I don't know if we've ever laid out ground rules as to how to engage with the chat, because I know you do have the option to send either a public chat, which you'll see as evidence to everyone, or you, people can send private chats to other people individually as well, which we would never see. So I think it's just something to consider. I don't know how much longer we're going to be on Zoom, but how do we maybe adapt to the digital aspect of a chat?
There's a motion and a second to allow confirmation from the public. Any other discussion? No call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
You just tell me who's out there looking to speak?
Jesse George raised their hand.
Okay.
Or his hand, sorry. I don't know.
Hello?
Hello? Mr. George?
Yes. I live at the corner of Carlton and Sunny Crest. This process for a stop sign has lasted about three and a half years. I noticed that people have been going, you know, were going really fast coming off 102. It's just Sunny Crest is a really straight road, well-maintained, and I don't think that they're necessarily going fast on purpose, but when you are on a nice, you know, well-maintained road, you just kind of pick up speed not noticing. As to the traffic studies that have been, have taken place, I live right there, and I've watched the police. They, each traffic study lasted about five minutes each time. So they may come out three times, but they're here for five minutes, and then they take off. So I don't know how a police officer for five minutes knows more than the eighteen parents and people who live on Sunny Crest and Carlton. We're constantly trying to get people to slow down. I don't think they know that, you know, a little boy almost got hit by a car two years ago, pulling out of, you know, he's on his scooter, coming out of Carlton, someone's on their phone, he had to push off the car not to get hit. So I don't think that the, you know, town administrator, the police department know these things, and I don't think I would have been at it for so long if I just wanted a stop sign. I think it's needed to get the people to slow down coming off 102. Or if you're coming from Sunny Crest onto Carlton, the visibility is very bad for kids coming out of Carlton. You know, when you're pulling out of Carlton, you have to kind of pull into the road to see if anyone's coming. So I don't think anybody has more knowledge. I don't, it doesn't matter if you've gone to school for traffic study, if you're here for fifteen minutes, but police officer, you're not going to know more than people that live on this. So thank you for your time, and thank you again for putting this on the agenda. It's been a long journey for me.
Mr. George, there's currently a stop sign on Carlton, correct?
There is, but however, to see the traffic coming from your left, pulling out of Carlton Avenue.
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I just wanted to understand that there are already two stop signs there, looking to make this a four-way stop.
Yes, and it's funny, because when I first started to complain, I did go to the Department of Public Works, and maybe a month later, those stop signs came in. And I went back and I said, "I think you put them on the wrong side." I asked, you know, "I've been complaining about Sunny Crest." And they said, "No, someone else must have complained," and they were put up. So it seems like that those other stop signs are needed, because you're going through them, you could come on to ongoing traffic. But I feel like those were, those were put up shortly after I started complaining about the, you know, the traffic and the speed. I have called the police department maybe fifteen, twenty times about speeding on the road, and I get. I have called the police department maybe fifteen, twenty times about speeding on the road, and I get the, we'll take a look at it response, so.
Okay, this is, this is the first time the council, this council takes it up. I know that Mrs. Zelinski sent an email early, middle of June, Paul, to have this put on the agenda.
I have the exact date, yeah, we'll say June.
Yeah, and so this was our first meeting since the time that we could, that we could address it, and so we're trying to address.
And I also have found that no one in town knows the process, you know, I've gone, I went to Public Works, they told me to go to police. I called the police department, you know, multiple times, never got a message back. I went to the town planner, I've gone, I've sent emails to the town administrator, I went, my last resort, I went to the building inspector and said, where can I go to get a stop sign? And he's, you know, off the top of his head, said, oh, contact the council, you know, town council. And that's how this all got started, so I mean, I think there needs to be a better process to get stop signs when parents are concerned about the traffic. I don't think it should be one individual in town deciding if a stop sign is needed. I think the voices of the residents should overweight someone's opinion. I mean, going around to the five, six houses around here, if you would just say, is a stop sign needed, they said, would say yes. I think that's proof enough that, you know, it is needed, and it's a problem.
Mr. George, this is the first time you've come to the council, though, am I not right?
It is, I was trying to find a process to get a stop sign in, and I was, it took me a lot of phone calls and a lot of asking to find a way to do this. I thought it would be much simpler process of getting a stop sign, saying, you know, that someone almost got hit, the traffic is bad, can we install a stop sign, and where to go, but it's, it proved to be a long and difficult process just to get heard.
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. George, can I have your address for the record, please?
Six Sunny Crest Avenue.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. George?
I just hope that you can do it before someone does get hurt, I mean, there hasn't been an accident yet, but I, every year, you know, there's more and more children coming into the neighborhood, and eventually it could happen. And then, you know, that'd be a horrible thing, that we've addressed it, and it was, if it was ever denied, and it came back that someone did get hurt, I'd, that'd be a horrible, a horrible thing for the town, I feel. You know, we could have.
Is there anyone else out there, Ms. Scott?
Carrie Turncliff, Tunaclef, sorry, sorry if I botch names.
It's okay, hi, my name's Carrie Conway Tunaclef, I live at seven Sunny Crest Ave. I've been here ten years now, and complaining about this issue probably just as long. I live opposite of Mr. George, and completely agree that anytime we call the police, they sit for maybe five minutes, and there's no issue, because nobody comes by in those five minutes. Especially now with COVID, there's more foot traffic. I'm actually afraid to walk my dog or walk down the street because of the speeding UPS vehicles, residents, it's a speedway. And I respectfully disagree with the town administrator. I don't think he spent five minutes on our street to know the severity of the problem. So to pass judgment in such a quick manner, I think is unfortunate. But I think a stop sign is needed and warranted. If anybody would like to sit in my front yard and hear me screaming and yelling to stop people speeding, feel free to pull up a chair right next to me, I do not have children, but I am afraid for the children in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Scott?
John Biergad raises his hand.
Mr. Biergad.
Mr. President, I don't want to sound disrespectful or anything, but this is really small potatoes. The people in the neighborhood want the stop sign, they feel it would make the neighborhood safer, it would be safer for their children. It's really a very, not a big deal, give them the stop sign, take the vote, give them the stop sign, and move on to the next thing. It does not have to be a big deal like this, and it certainly shouldn't have waited all these years to happen. You can do this in two votes, just get it done, and move on to the next thing.
That's what I brought forward, is that it needs to be done by ordinance to do it right, to do it properly, it needs to be done by ordinance. That's my point, and I didn't, and I didn't see this resolution until five o'clock today. First time I see the resolution was five o'clock today. So had I known this resolution was coming, or seen the resolution prior to the packet, I would have addressed it, saying, no, this needs to be an ordinance. I don't disagree with you, Mr. Biergad, that this could be a simple thing of two meetings, and the stop sign gets put up. I'm not disagreeing with you, but there's a process to follow.
I'm familiar with the process, sir.
Then, Mr. Vatine, why don't we choose the speediest way to do it?
Excuse me?
Perhaps we can choose the speediest way to accommodate this problem.
It's two meetings, it's an ordinance.
Okay, two meetings, can't, can't, there's no little shortcut anywhere.
Right now, we've opened a floor for discussion for the,
Okay.
And we can discuss it at the same time, I just want to make you aware that Mr. Zelinski made a motion, and I seconded the motion, put an ordinance on the next agenda to begin the process to address this.
Yeah, but let's make sure, Mr. President, let's make sure that I have exhausted the possibility of asking the director of public safety to say, put a sign in. This leaves me no other action but to drag this out for two more meetings, and also possibly incur a veto of it afterwards. So let's be clear, the reason I'm asking for it to become an ordinance is because it's not happening this evening by decision of the public safety director. So a couple of things, Ms. Carrie Tunaclef got on, and I believe Carrie was once a member of the planning board, I could be wrong, so I think she understands traffic. Carrie, if you're out there, just say yes, I can hear, I use the same Carrie. The other, the other piece is, don't get confused with Carlton Avenue stop signs. If you're facing Mr. George's house, Carlton Avenue to the side of him has maybe five houses on it, it's a dead end. If you go to the other side where Carrie lives, from what she described, that connects to Rainville Avenue. I don't think there's a whole bunch of traffic coming out of Carlton Avenue. The speedway is Sunny Crest Avenue, it's that simple, that's where the stop signs need to be. They should have been put up months ago, if not years ago. It's before us, I hope we don't drag this out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else, Ms. Scott, out there?
Unless the people who wrote in the chat want to speak what they wrote, no, but nobody's raising their hand.
Is there anybody out there that would like to speak on this topic?
Terry Harvey raised their hand.
Okay. Mrs. Harvey?
Hi, hello. I was fortunate enough to grow up on Sunny Crest Avenue, I live at five Sunny Crest Avenue. I left, married, had children, was very lucky to return. To my dismay, the traffic had changed enormously, where I was all excited about my kids riding bikes on the street, it's become quite the, I call it thoroughfare. My kids are now older, I'm not quite as nervous about them getting hit on their bikes. But this stop sign, it's essential. Every day, we get so nervous watching all the little kids. When school was in session, one morning, I counted the children at the bus stop, which by the way, is at that corner of Carlton and Sunny Crest. There were nineteen children, I'm talking elementary school, at that bus stop. We have to do something to slow the people down. As Jesse George mentioned, we don't think people are doing it on purpose. The road is an easy road to speed on. We have to do something to slow them down. Even though, again, even though my kids are older, I'm so nervous for these other little ones. That's all I really have to say about it.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? Any hands up, Ms. Scott?
No hands up, but people are talking in the chat.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Ogier?
So I too didn't see the.
I'm sorry, Alexandra Norton's asking to speak.
She can go after Mr. Ogier.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know how you wanted the order to go.
Yeah, I was just, I was just confused by the resolution today. I, I'm fine with putting a stop sign in, you know, it's definitely a peace of mind, you know, I, if the car's speeding down that fast, I think we should have the proper safeguards in place, you know, even to, you know, ensure that no future accident does occur. I didn't see the resolution till, till five o'clock as well, Paul, as you brought up. And I just wasn't sure, were we aware that the, that the stop sign was rejected before? Because it seems like it would have been more advantageous for us to then come right within an ordinance, instead of waiting another meeting to kick the, to take this issue on down the line. I was just kind of concerned, confused about the timing of, you know, the know about if the stop sign was denied originally. Because I'd rather have been discussing an ordinance tonight, instead of what may or may not have been the situation. So I don't know if Paul can elaborate on that, if he knew in advance, or.
Are you talking to me, Councilman Ogier?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you knew that if the sign was denied or not originally, because it seems like it's pretty clear that we would have needed an ordinance in this situation. So that's why I was just curious as to when did you learn that the, that the sign was denied? If it was in prior communication, I know you said there was a long email chain, I don't know how many. Or if it was, this is the first time you're hearing about it tonight?
No, I was aware of it, Administrator Zosovski made me aware of that, he didn't feel it warranted a stop sign out there. I contacted the town solicitor, and I asked Mr. Iglesias, how can we go about this, let the council vote, if we have to? And so the resolution you got this evening was created by Solicitor Iglesias. So when he created it, that question is best posed to him.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, the resolution kind of doesn't mean anything, because it sounds like the route all along should have been is, let's craft an ordinance and do it that way. You know, like I said, I'm all for putting a stop sign in, you know, I would vote tonight to put one in. But, you know, we do have a process, and it's a lengthy process, so, you know, if we don't like the process, we should talk about changing it for these circumstan, for these situations, if they do arise in the future.
Mr. Ogier, I don't feel there's a council member that would vote against putting up the stop sign. Unfortunately, hopefully, cooler, not cooler heads, hopefully influence to the public safety director to say, would you kindly reconsider this, and say, yes, let's put up a sign, it'll be over tonight? As opposed to dragging this out, having parents worry, school bus stop signs, school bus stop areas. It's not hard, we face bigger decisions than this. Just hopefully, we would hear a positive from the public safety director to put up a stop sign this evening. It would save a lot, it would be so much more effective as well as efficient, just to do it this evening.
Ms. Norton?
Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, so I have a question, as a community, this is a perfect example of, you know, what can we sort of arrive at from all of these discussions? Who would be responsible for creating a system where we are able to track these kind of reporting, so then we can actually concentrate on these high-risk, high-call areas? It seems like we need a system in place that's transparent, and that's being followed, and, you know, being acted on. And I wonder if that's something that, you know, the community can address, and let's be preventive instead of reactionary? Thank you.
Anyone else out there? No other hands up?
Nobody with their hands up. Again, still making comments in the chat, but that's it.
Mr. President, it appears that as much as I wish this was decided this evening, it's not going to happen, and I want to make it very clear that this is the last option that the residents have to have a stop sign. I'm really dismayed that I have to make a motion for an ordinance that'll address the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Sunny Crest and Carlton Avenue. But that's my motion, Mr. President.
You've already made the motion, and I second.
Reinforcing it, Mr. President.
Okay. Discussion, just on the discussion. The ordinance is clear, Paul, that this is how to go about doing a traffic control device, which a stop sign is. It's clear that it needs to be through an ordinance, so if the council wants to take action, it needed to be through an ordinance. That's clear, it's clear to me, and even the solicitor agreed that if the council wants to do this, it's an ordinance. I understand your frustration with it, that you, that there's other ways that can be done. I've been on the same side of this, of the issue that Mr. George and Mrs. Harvey and Ms. Tunaclef are on, looking for a stop sign in my neighborhood, when it was my children that were small, there's a group of twenty small children in the neighborhood, on a dead-end street that got opened up to twenty-eight new houses. I'm aware of the process that you need to go through, and the length sometimes, and the frustration that you go through. I've been in that position. But sitting as a councilperson, I know that it needs to be done through an ordinance, and so that's what we're trying to propose, so that we can get it done by ordinance.
So, yes, thank you for recognizing my frustration. I hope when it comes time to vote, that everybody recognizes the frustration and the safety concerns of the residents on Sunny Crest and Carlton Avenue. We could have solid.
Any other discussion? So the motion is to have the solicitor draft an ordinance for stop signs to be placed at the intersection of Carlton and Sunny Crest, creating a four-way stop, a four-way, four-way stop intersection.
That's correct.
No other discussion, roll call vote.
Sorry, do you?
Hold on, Mr. Ogier.
There's still another person raising their hand to chat, do you want to take the vote, or do you want to hear what they have to say?
A comment, please.
Jesse B.
Hi, my name is Kristen George, so I don't want to sound redundant, I live at six Sunny Crest Ave. My husband's.
Could you say your name, could you say your name, please, for the record?
I'm sorry, Kristen George. My husband has already spoken on the issue, so I don't want to sound redundant. I just have a one question, you mentioned that you understand the process is long and frustrating, and how this is, the ordinance is the way that we needed to put a stop sign, but how come no one could tell us that in three and a half years?
I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
When I saw this being put on, I knew it needed to be by ordinance, so. And I was waiting to, and I didn't see it, I saw a resolution today, not an ordinance. I was never aware of this, I've, I mean, I can't, I've been in the council for eighteen months. I've never heard or seen this before, this is the first time I'm seeing it. So if it's been an ongoing issue for three and a half years, it was never brought to the council's attention. And the only, the only thing I can tell you is, when it was an issue for me, I physically went, and I know that things are different right now with COVID, but three and a half years ago, things were not. I physically got up out of my chair at my house, and went to a council meeting, and addressed the issue directly with the council in person. That's how I handled it twenty-five years ago, as a younger man. So if it's been going on for three and a half years, the way to resolve that would have been to go to the council meeting and let them know. It wasn't to talk to the building inspector, if you really want to get something done, then you need to go to those that can, can make it happen. I don't know why the police, or the Department of Public Works, or any, any number of other people refused or didn't tell you what was the proper procedure. But in my opinion, what you should have done is gone to the council three and a half years ago, and there would already be a stop sign there, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you, no, I understand, we didn't know that that was the procedure, we just kept getting sent to different places. Not once was bring it to the town council ever mentioned to us, so.
Okay.
But your explanation and thank you for, for taking the time to listen.
Nope, my pleasure.
It, it's here now, Mrs. George, it's in our lap to make that decision. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ozier, you have a comment before we vote?
Yeah, is there anything else that we can do from the police department's perspective? Can they maybe, I know, could they put like one of those like speed radar things down there for, you know, or something like that? Any other type of thing that, you know, can be done to at least ease the, you know, ease any concern of what is happening? As, you know, starting to reinforce that behavior that, hey, you know, this is coming. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I'm just asking the question, I don't know if it's possible or not.
Um, I'll venture to guess that the administrator can talk to the police chief and he can have that trailer put out there notifying people. The one thing I, I, I know a few people out there and it wasn't, I wasn't out there for this stop sign issue, I was out there for a different issue over on, um, Georgiana. And I noticed the stop, the, the traffic signs, speed limit signs that were put up, which are new. So people need to adjust to those. And, and like I say, 25 years ago, I, I, I asked and petitioned and got a stop sign put up. And it was frustrating when the cars were going through the stop sign. And, and you laugh when you hear the rest of the story, I went back to the council and let them know, thank you for putting up the stop sign, but they're still going through it. The chief was at the meeting and he said to me, well, it's a new stop sign, people need to get used to it. And I said, it's a cruiser that's going through it. Honest to God, every night. And he didn't know what to say. So the speed limit signs are up there now and, and I'm sure that if, if we talk to the administrator, he'll, he'll have the police department put the, the trailer out there warning people. Um, but sometimes it takes a little bit of time to educate people so they understand, okay, there's a speed limit out here and everything, so. Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. President, the, uh, the mobile message board has already been out there. It was moved because it was a little too far in on Sunny Crest, it was moved closer to the intersection to warn people to slow down. Um, as far as the stop sign, this gives the police the tool they need should somebody blow through a stop sign and take an aggressive rolling stop through a stop sign. Now they have the tool to write a ticket. Right now, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a speedway.
Mr. Zosowski?
Uh, we have, Mr. President, already, uh, at my request and the, uh, uh, chief has endeavored to have Speed Patrol out there, which is the solution, um, to controlling speed. Um, so, and we will, you know, I will continue to, to request that that happen. As, uh, each council person knows, um, speeding traffic is the, um, the most frequent complaint that we get from every corner of this town. Whether it's north, south, east, west, doesn't matter, speeding cars are the, the, uh, the highest frequency of, of complaint that we get. We do try to, the police department does try to, um, keep abreast of them. I, uh, always, uh, make them aware of any new ones that are brought to us, including this one. And patrols have been there, they will continue to be there as is possible for, um, the two to three cars that are on the road at any time of day. With the recognition that they obviously have to leave to go to other calls, uh, as they, uh, as they come up.
Ms. Scott, roll call vote.
Mrs. Baranioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
Yes. Mr. Iglesias, you'll have that ready for the next council meeting? You still there? Anyone mute David or, oh, here he is.
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. President, that won't be a problem at all.
Can you do, do me a favor? And send it, send, when you get it drafted, send it to myself and to Mrs. Zelinski. So if we have any, any last minute changes or we would like to see you put something else on it, we can, we can address it before it gets to the council meeting.
Sure. You mean the, the ordinance for the stop sign?
Yeah.
It's a very.
Once you do a draft for it, just send, send it to the two of us to review. Thank you. Next item, discussion by council board of action on awarding the bid for paving of the municipal annex playground. Mr. Haces.
You're muted.
Evening.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
I received a recommendation from the DPW director, um, regarding, um, paving the municipal annex playground and he received two quotes from the State of Rhode Island MPA list. One from Narragansett Improvement for $15,965 and one from T, TMEOC for $24,688.77. It is our recommendation to go with the lowest bidder, which is Narragansett Improvement in the amount of $15,965, which will be reimbursed by the DM Recreation Grant.
You've read the recommendation of the finance director, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Zelinski, is there a second? By Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Baranioli. Um, just so everyone's aware, like, the finance director stated, it's from Master Price Agreement number 381, it's an Narragansett Improvement in the amount of $15,965. Um, is the last piece of this puzzle that needs to be done to complete this park? Or is there something else? We've already done, we've already done the fencing, the irrigation, and now we're doing the paving. Is there something else that's, needs to be done to finish this?
Um, yeah, it talks about equipment, replacing some equipment, some bike racks. I'm not sure what, um, what the plan is, but that's the scope of work that I see in the, um, grant.
Okay, Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes, I, I went to look at that park because years ago, when there were swings there, et cetera, in a tennis court, um, we utilized it. Who made the decision to bring over some of the equipment from Halliwell? It is not suitable for young children.
I can't answer, I, I have, I have nothing to do, I have nothing to do with that, Mitch.
I did. Mr. President?
Go ahead.
The, uh, well, um, Mrs. O'Hara, Councilor O'Hara, I mean, there's no age limit to, uh, the specific use in this park and the equipment at Halliwell was to, uh, be used nowhere. Um, the, rather than see it deteriorate, it was, uh, initially thought that half of it would go to NSCS and the other half would be used in this park. Uh, the, the half that, uh, was dedicated to go to NSCS, the school department didn't want at NSCS. So, I mean, um.
Was all the other stuff going to come over to this park?
Pardon me?
Is all the other equipment going to be brought over to the Butchy Park?
I have discussed that with the Director of Public Works, who has been managing this to try to coordinate a plan. I think it should be, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Zelinski, I saw you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, mine's a little bit lighter of a comment. Maybe we can have Mr. Malucci dedicate the opening because he's been a very strong advocate for this. And, uh, he, he's, uh, for a few years now, been making sure this happens along with, uh, Mr. Bendiga. So, uh, just kudos to Mr. Malucci, maybe we can ask him to come out and dedicate the new trike.
Oh, yeah. Did you have your hand up?
No, no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Pardon me, Eli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ozier?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council board of action on request to abandon a portion of Stony Drive. Referral to planning board for recommendation, we have a letter from William L. Bernstein, attorney. He's representing the Ashambos, who are looking to have a portion of Stony Drive abandoned by the town. Um, as usual, we send it to the planning board for their recommendation and then it comes back to us, which point we'll have a public hearing and then we'll take action on it. Is there a motion to send this over to the planning board?
Motion with discussion, Mr. President?
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Mrs. O'Hara, discussion, Mrs. Zelinski.
Yeah, just, just to, uh, I'm sure the planning board will look at this and, and study it just to make sure that the International Guard is advised, that this is, they are a buddies, they would be advised. But, uh, it is a government, a government, uh, location, so. Let's see what happens after the planning board does their due diligence.
It's kind of strange that they would put a road like that that ends on someone else's property that would never be extended. That they, that they made it like that, I mean, it could have been part of the way that they had to do the subdivision to make it, to make it legal. But it seems kind of strange that you have that road dividing the two properties that goes to nowhere. Of their properties, but we'll let the planning board decide.
Yeah, I mean, that would give, uh, you know, I, I can't recall this, uh, as part, because I think I was on the planning board when we reviewed this. But maybe take consideration for another ingress and egress for the National Guard as, as opposed to coming in one way or the other. So I, I, I don't know, but that would be in the records of planning.
Yeah, Mr. Zosowski?
Uh, Mr. Bernstein has been on this call, I don't know if you want to, uh, ask if he has any comments or.
He did raise his hand.
Yes. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can, go ahead, Mr. Bernstein.
I represent the Ashambos, they've lived there, lived there since 2013. Uh, what brought this up was they are about to sell their home and they did a survey and now they find out that a portion of their driveway actually extends to this right-of-way, which by the way, has never been used by the International Guard. We certainly have no objection at all to, uh, notifying them and inviting their comments. The other option we thought of was, it now creates a, uh, side yard, uh, issue with zoning. We spoke with the neighbor across the way, he is on board. And we, we can submit all the information that the meeting, uh, commission, the planning board wishes to have. We're trying to, uh, get this into a situation where the house is actually saleable. He had a purchase and sales agreement and then this was discovered by survey. So at the present point, uh, the house is not saleable until this issue has been addressed.
Thank you, Mrs. Zelinski?
Mr. Bernstein, it's been the past, uh, practice of the town to take the center, uh, center line of these easements and offer it to both the budding property owners. Uh, in the past, there's been some type of remuneration requested because it's, uh, right now it's a right-of-way. Uh, so just, I'm sure the planning board will go over all that with you when, when you represent your client.
Yeah, absolutely, the, uh, neighbor across the way is, uh, willing to work with us and I don't anticipate any, any problems. That is, that is the state of the law that once, once a roadway or right-of-way is, is abandoned, you're, you're right. Uh, each abutter, uh, owns to the center line, so we're prepared to go forward with the consent of the neighbor.
Thank you.
Mr. Zosowski?
This is simply the first step, we know there's a process and we intend to follow it, but I, I'm happy and I thank the board for taking the time to, to begin this process.
All right, Gary.
If I might, um, since the issue has been questioned, I'll just offer that, uh, and I was a member of the planning board when this, uh, subdivision, uh, was done back in the eighties. Um, the reason that these, uh, extensions, uh, of public way opportunity are there is because, um, the late, uh, Mo Bojat, who was a, an outstanding, uh, member of our planning board for uh, a long, long time, had, uh, in, um, encouraged that as we did, uh, make, take actions on subdivisions, that we also look to create what he called a well-articulating, uh, street system. And, uh, I didn't even know what he meant at the time, um, that he first mentioned it. But the idea is that we, we don't create, um, more and more of the dead-end circumstances that we have in so many places in town. And that as we look at subdivisions, we create opportunity for future connections to nearby land so that we have through streets, not these, uh, cul-de-sacs that, that go nowhere. Uh, there are folks who are proud of or happy to be in the cul-de-sac environment. Uh, but these circumstances present, uh, time challenges for us with, um, um, emergency vehicle access. So these, uh, these extensions are no mistake. Uh, it is unfortunate to realize that apparently there was some kind of layout problem, um, when this, uh, property was developed. Um, but, um, there, there was a purpose, uh, to each of these, um, different extensions. Uh, and they, they exist in others like out at Nipsichuk Estates, as well as Rolling Acres, uh, all focused on trying to, um, maintain future connections between our, our major roadways. Just background, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, a little bit more to follow up. I, I think the year was roughly 2000, maybe after that, uh, when the government was looking into abandoned basis. We had a committee formed in North Smithville to take a look at these properties and to, uh, evaluate the usefulness because at that point, the government was donating it to the host communities. So we may find more answers in that, uh, planning board members, hopefully those files are still, uh, available.
Mrs. Baranioli?
Yes, I do have a question for Mr. Bernstein, for your client. If we're dividing that down the center, does that give them enough land to take into account that their driveway is in this area?
That's a great question, almost.
Okay.
We do have a, uh, an agreement with the abutter on the other side.
Okay.
He would be willing, uh, after a fair appraisal, he would be willing to give us sufficient amount of extra footage to bring us into compliance.
All right. I just don't want you to go through this whole process and she's still now has to put a new driveway in.
Exactly, that's, we did, uh, broach that subject and, uh, we're just waiting to see what the planning board requires. After that, we are prepared to, um, develop, I, I guess it would be a minor subdivision, but the neighbor is willing to give us sufficient, uh, property to bring us into compliance with all the regulations.
Is this something that all neighbors within a certain distance would be notified about?
Um, I will defer to the solicitor, but it's my understanding that, that the notice certainly has to go to just the.
Just the abutters.
Budding owners, but that would include the, uh, US government.
Okay.
That's correct.
Other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baranioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
Yes. So we'll go to the zoning, it will be going to the planning board for their review, I'm sure they'll contact you, Mr. Bernstein. Uh, eventually you'll be back before us.
Yes, thank you for your consideration.
To resolve the issue.
Thank you.
Last item, discussion by council board of action on Mechanic Street and Old Great Road Waterline, Oil and Fogerty Construction Company invoice number one, we do have an invoice. Um, invoice number one, obviously, from Oil and Fogerty Construction. We need a water and sewer line and they are submitted a pay request, $708,990.74. Their motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mrs. Baranioli, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Under discussion, I did have a chance, just random, not trying to go and look at, see what was being done, I was going out that way. Um, they are quite, quite a ways along with the digging and putting in the line, are they, are they not, Mr. Zosowski?
Actually, I believe that while they're done, uh, from start to finish with the line itself, um, they have also completed most of the, um, uh, the taps to the property lines. Um, they have a, um, a few more locations to dig, uh, things that we held off to make sure that we had uh, sufficient funding, uh, for, uh, will be going forward if they haven't already. Uh, this project's moved, moved along very, very well, uh, and at present, looks like it will be, uh, significantly under budget.
Good. Any other? Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
Yes. That concludes our meeting for the night, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, second by Mrs. Baramioli. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Aye.
Mr. Ozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
Yes. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.